Welcome to Beautiful Downtown Grand Forks. It is October thirteenth. This is the time and place of the Grand Forks Committee of the Whole Meeting. Item one's call to order, 1.1, welcome and roll call.
Weigel, Selsky, Berg, Lunskey, Friedals, Veen, Sandy.
Here.
We are all present to have a form.
Thank you. Item two is informational items, 2.1 homeless and housing working group update.
Vice President Weigel and members of the committee come before you today to provide an update on the third meeting of the homelessness and housing working group. I have two updates and then a summary of the working group's next steps. The first update being surrounding the nest. They gave provided an update of the policy considerations that were discussed at the last council meeting and they've confirmed that all clients that have stayed with them and are currently in that facility have had a service connection within the last 15 days. So that being Northeast, Spectra Housing Authority, F5, or Agacy Associates, et cetera. They're willing to consider upon check into the shelter within three to five business days, assignment of a case manager. And that would be delineating that they're not working, already working with a different case manager somewhere else to confirm that case plan. So that's ensuring that what, what is that pathway? What are those barriers that client is facing to their road to housing? So just formalizing that process. They've also confirmed clients are accessing resources throughout the day. So leaving their facility, going to appointments and some even have jobs. So their next steps is reviewing that length of time on waiting lists. And so that's ensuring that they have a good understanding and are having concrete data of tracking what those barriers are, whether that be a criminal history, low credit, the need for deposits, or they have rental in arrears. And so hopefully we'll have some robust discussion once that is compiled. And then finally, briefly touched on the location of the nest. We really discussed as a group that it would be quite costly to, to move that location of the nest. We would have to have significant investment in transportation and other logistics for those clients to be connected to the resources they are currently connected to. But as their good community partners, we're certainly willing to consider other solutions that to be reviewed. My second date update is surrounding a white van sighting. So there was a report of a white van dropping individuals off at the nest over the noon hour, I want to say earlier this month, and they were accompanied by two people wearing a uniform. So my colleague Colin Hanson confirmed that these were clients of the DOCR program located in Center Inc., which is the building right next to the nest. Their program director confirmed that a white van from the state penitentiary brings individuals on work, work release or parole to stay at Center while receiving treatment on their DOCR floor. The program director stated that there were two transits from the state pen that week, one of which arrived over the noon hour, which was the same time as the sighting of the van. These folks likely have a connection to our community, whether they have family, children in Grand Forks, or they have a job opportunity here. And Kelly, the program director extended invitation for all city staff, as well as city council members to tour that facility, learn about the programs and see where those individuals stay. And then the group also has shared that there's a couple other vans that are familiar to these entities, one being a blue van, which is owned by Center Inc. And then there is a tan or brown van that comes to the nest for clients that do have a job, that they're transporting those individuals. So finally, the next steps around what the working group has kind of discussed, we need some legal consultation around the confidentiality of the PD's kind of top six individuals that they've identified. So Kana is a group of a lot of the service providers in town. They meet on a monthly basis. There's a subgroup to that called CARES. And they are the Housing Management Information System users. So that is directed by HUD. There's a formal agreement in place and those clients that they're working with sign a release of information form. And so we have to be cognizant of that formal process and we don't want to reinvent that wheel. But what was really discussed at the group is that these entities can't be sure that these top six are being discussed on this weekly basis because either their housing status is not known, that they may have been assisted at one point, but may no longer be assisted with housing. And then we just want to be sure that there is, the intensiveness needed for these individuals is given time. And so there's also expressed need for the, like a coordinated readiness for those individuals who, if they do want help, what is the plan and that, that is communicated when those individuals enter these programs at any certain time or our police department runs across them. Secondly, it was shared that the need for a best practice review, we're not the only a community in this nation facing this. And so it was shared that there's been a focus on peer support in non-traditional settings. So peer support is really persons with lived experience connecting with those individuals, working alongside those professionals in that setting. Whether that be some communities have deployed like a street team to kind of just touch base with those individuals, understanding needs. There's also discussion around the need for advocacy around expanded Medicaid. And that's kind of an upstream effort to help kind of the prevention piece. But expanded Medicaid really allows for some of those costs by these entities sitting in this working group to be recouped, or at least the burden lessened, given the time intensity that some of these folks do take by, by the resources. And then thus there's more available money to assist the folks given their non-traditional needs. Thirdly, there was really a call to the boards of these nonprofits to be aware and to be involved in reducing the operational disconnect. And so ensuring that boards are involved, that they're not rubber stamping things and that we're all doing everything that we possibly can to better our community. And along with that, there's certainly a call by the leaders of these nonprofits, part of this group, to review their policy to ensure that they're doing everything possible to ensure additional flexibilities. We don't want to be sending these people out to other communities, just as we don't want other communities doing that to us. There is really a dire need shared that of these entities, that homelessness prevention, so wraparound services for folks to remain in their housing situation, and then the need for rapid rehousing. So that's very short-term stints, supporting folks, whether that's rental assistance or case management, to help them ensure the right trajectory of paths. So they aren't caught up in maybe a cycle that they either could get lost in, or that we could just have prevented the, the longer resource management. And finally, much discussion around what are the, what does the big picture look like? Longer-term solutions, including state involvement, state advocacy at this next legislative session. Commissioner Huth really provided some insight and a willingness that the state is wanting to work alongside communities such as ours for that policy change and, and funding opportunities here. So with that, I can stand for any questions. Otherwise, I'll hand it over to my colleague DC Mackey to provide an update from the PD.
Thank you. Mrs. Solsky, questions for Ms. Wall?
What did you, who are the people in the white van they're going to DOCR?
DOCR, Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. So those are folks that reside at the state penitentiary.
Where is the state pen?
Bismarck.
So are they only bringing people that have connection to our community, or are they just dumping off anybody?
It is my understanding, and I would need clarification from Kelly, the program manager, that these folks have a direct connection to Grand Forks.
Okay, can you, can you reach out and try to verify that? Because I know there was something going on in the county about they weren't willing to sign an agreement with the state if they did not remove those people from our community. So I just want to make sure that, you know, people aren't being driven here from Bismarck and just dumped in Grand Forks because we do have the services to, to support them. So if you could just maybe even clarify what exactly does connection with the community mean, you know, I would appreciate that.
Yep.
So, and then also, you know, we talked about DOCR and then Center Inc. Is, is there any way that maybe you could provide a list of all these nonprofits that you are really working with?
Yes, I can. It was shared with the agenda of the working group, so I can share that with the council.
And then are, with the list that you have for the working group, is that people that are participating in working together, are there additional nonprofits then that aren't a part of the working group?
Likely there is additional nonprofits. This was kind of that core group of folks that are the primary sheltering in, in our community. So there might be tangential, so their wraparound services, mental health, behavioral health. Some of those are represented, but certainly not all.
Okay, yeah, if I could get that list also. And then I, I don't know, maybe even just the different services or, you know, nonprofits that are maybe underneath then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Solsky, further questions for Ms. Wall? Seeing none, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Pairing with the information you just heard, we just wanted to provide an update. Several months ago, we came before you to ask you for permission to apply for a federal cops hiring grant. We received notice this morning that we did gain approval. We are authorized to hire three police officers on this grant. And a reminder of the focus of these officers was focusing in the downtown area. At this point, we're calling them downtown, downtown community enhancement officers. The name really doesn't matter, that'll probably change. But really, these officers will be focused on these downtown issues that we've been working on all year. The expectation is data-driven policing paired with community engagement and community partnerships and a consistent officer working these issues. So right now, it's whoever happens to be assigned to that area or in that area. With these three dedicated officers in the downtown area, we're going to have much more consistent working ability with these officers. There's not going to be as much catch-up when a situation does happen because these officers are going to be very familiar. Even if they're not the ones handling the calls at all times, they're going to be much more familiar with what is happening and who is acting within our downtown area. A reminder on how the financing works, it's a three-year phased-in grant. First year, the federal grant pays 75% of the salary. Second year is 50%, third year is 25%, and then there's a mandatory two-year retention at that point for those positions. We do have to be fully staffed before we can leverage that grant funding. We are a couple of officers short at this time. We are in the middle of a hiring process. So with, with good applicants and enough candidates for us to be able to hire, we should be able to start hiring for these positions soon into '26. So I'll stand for any questions on these positions if we have any.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Questions for seeing none? Oh, Mr. Friedals?
Just a quick comment. This is awesome. I think, you know, the foresight to even apply for the grant, right? It shows that, you know, there's money out there for this kind of stuff. And then it kind of, at the same time, people identified, hey, we've got this problem downtown. And so it doesn't cure itself overnight and you guys had the foresight to really plan and operate on a, on a foreseen problem. And then now we're, we're working to solve that problem. So I hope people realize that, so.
Appreciate the comment. All right, seeing no further comments. Thank you, Deputy Chief Mackey.
Thank you.
Move on to item 2.2 Children's Museum update. Mr. Gostin?
Yes, I'll just provide a brief update as to where things lie from an agreement standpoint. I think we've gone through this before, if my memory serves me. We went through the agreement several months ago when the location was at, on property owned by Altru. Then there was a shift to move the location to property that's now owned by the JDA. I think I went through some of the changes to the development agreement that resulted from that move from location. The, the one thing that was constant was the funding and the conditions for funding stayed the same, regardless of where the location was at. There's two sources of funding, one for construction and then for post-construction to assist with their financing for, that they may obtain, to assist in, in, in using those city funds to assist in, in their repayment of their loans. The, the, because of the change in the location, some of the construction requirements in the development agreement changed. Largely though, they, they did stay the same. They track similar construction requirements we have in other development agreements that you've seen before for pilots and, and for the racetrack as well. The one change was ground lease now needs to be entered into before construction can start. The ground lease would be between the JDA, that's the owner of the property, and the children's museum. Also, before construction, during construction, there can't be any default under the ground lease and there'll be remedies if that would occur. Be mindful that there's really two buckets of funds. One is the city construction fund, which is at $6.3 million. Again, no change in the number. Reimbursement stays the same in that they have to expend the dollars and, and ask for reimbursement. Funding requests have to come in and they have to delineate the percentage of completion they've reached. And that, all the costs relating to those, to that reimbursement have actually been paid out by the Children's Museum. Again, it's a reimbursement mechanism. The conditions for distribution of those construction funds, again, the percentage of completion is accurate, that, that the museum provides a statement that they're fully funded when you consider the city construction funds, 6.3, and other sources of funds they may have. And again, the ground lease is in existence. There's no default under the ground lease, no default under the development agreement. There's also provision regarding material change. And the reason that's in there is so that the city's percentage of the total cost remains constant, meaning if the construction, the estimated construction cost is, let's just say 30 million, I'm, it's not what is, is for certain, I'm just trying to use it as an example, and we're using $10 million of total construction funds, that would mean we'd be at one-third, right? And if the construction costs actually go down to a certain level, then our, our percentage stays at that one-third, and that means the construction funds would go down so that we're not taking on a higher percentage of the total construction cost. That stayed the same. I also mentioned there's these finance funds in the total amount of $3.7 million. It's $400,000 per year. There's one year where it's an increase to $900,000. But again, they're to be used solely to assist in the finance costs that the museum might encounter in, in their loans to construct the, the facility. The, the conditions under the finance are a little different in that there has to be an annual approval by the city council for the distribution of those funds. There also has to be a statement that the, the debt that they incurred were used solely for construction costs, not for operations. There has to be a report of the operations on an annual basis by the museum. All the conditions that we talked about as far as the construction funds are still satisfied, meaning the ground lease is in effect, there's no default, those type of things would have to be conditioned before the, before the funds are distributed. And of course, there are default provisions and remedies, which would include now incorporating the ground lease and, and ramifications for that. We've gone back and forth a little bit. I think we're probably down to the last few items between the city and the, and the children museum with respect to this new location. So that should be ready for approval here in the very near future. And I will take responsibility with the next agreement in not being able to get to it as quickly as I probably wanted to. It's the ground lease. I've now shared that with Children's Museum today, a pretty standard type of an agreement. There are some things that still need to be worked out, such as what the initial term is and what the extensions might be and how many extensions you're going to grant. I would expect this to be a long-term lease, you know, 40, 50-year length type of scenario, given this, that construction that's going to be placed on the, on the property. There are certain other items in there that I'll just highlight real quickly. There is provisions regarding completion of the museum by a certain date. And if it's not completed by that certain date, there's an option to terminate that ground lease and then to either have the property placed back to its same condition or just to transfer whatever is in existence to the JDA. The authorized uses for the ground lease is simply to construct the children's museum and to operate it, no other uses unless it's approved by the JDA. There's a number of obligations that are imposed primarily to maintain and, and keep the facility in good repair. There is to be no assignment of the rights under the ground lease to anybody else absent JDA approval. Also, no liens and encumbrances should be imposed for construction liens, for example. They have to be paid, those that do the work. Also, that there is, they have sufficient funds. It kind of ties into the construction funding mechanism that the museum has sufficient funds to complete the project. There are also provisions regarding the damage to the property if something would happen. Do they repair it or, or not? And it, it's based upon the, the amount of damage that might exist. I think it was an 80% of the fair market value of the property. If it gets to that level, then there's a decision that can be made by the museum whether they want to repair it or, or not. And if they decide not to repair it, then they use the insurance proceeds to remove whatever is there, to put it back in its existing condition. There are insurance requirements as well from liability, building damage to maintain that, builder's risk. And then if they're, under all those policies, the city and the JDA would be named as additional insureds. Again, there are default and remedies mostly directed at what happens and, and do we terminate? And, and the option of either returning the property back to its existing condition or taking what is, whatever is, is in existence at the time. So that's a relatively new agreement that's been shared with the children's museum today. Hopefully, we'll be able to crunch that out sooner rather than later. And I'm not, and my lack of diligence doesn't get in the way in getting that done. So with that, I, I understand that Katie Meyer might be, is here and be able to provide a little bit more insight as to where they're at from the, from the project as well.
Mr. Gostin, can we ask a question real quick?
Sure, for sure.
Ms. Berg?
You had mentioned that we want to stay at a third of the funding level. Is that the same if the cost increases or if it just decreases?
It's only if it decreases. And the one-third is just an example. It's, I, I don't know the exact percentage because if it increases, that's not something that would change our funding mechanism. It wouldn't, it wouldn't increase our funding mechanism, stays the same. It's just if the cost went down, we want to stay at a relatively same percentage of funding.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
All right. Vice President Weigel and committee members, thank you for having me, giving me the opportunity to update you tonight and for your continued support. We've had a very exciting couple of weeks with the children's museum. So I have a few updates with you. As you know, we just finished our fourth annual Full Steam Ahead pop-up museum at the Curling Club. It was very well attended and we had new activities all around. And then over the weekend, we moved it to Warren, Minnesota. So we are going to be open there Tuesday through Friday this week for people to attend there. So that was really exciting. We're calling it Full Steam Ahead Next Door. So if you didn't have opportunity to attend in Grand Forks, please head to Warren this week if you have the opportunity. And then we have been evaluating costs as we've been doing all along in our project and have brought the project cost down to 35 million from the last one, which was 40.8. Hopefully, we're still in that percentage range. So bringing that down to 35 million was very helpful for all of us. And we've made the decision at our last board meeting to break ground this coming spring, which would put us in all the timelines for getting everything done and opening in, within the timeline of the contract that we have been talking about. We, our most exciting news is we recently received a $2 million matching grant opportunity from a anonymous donor. This family was, is choosing to remain anonymous. And what they will do is they will match up to $2 million of any new money donations of 250,000 or more that come in. So that was very exciting news for us. Once that is matched, we will be at $31 million raised for this project of the $35 million goal we are working towards. So that was a very exciting time for us to get that. That's our biggest private donation so far. The city is still our biggest funder up to date, but our biggest private donation. And then I think that's all the updates I have, but we're still working hard, looking for funding and we're just excited that we get to continue on this path and bring this to our city.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
Questions? Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
All right, move on to item number three is discussion items, 3.1 2026 Arts Regret Program. Mr. Conlin?
Thank you, Vice President Weigel, members of the committee. Here tonight just seeking authorization to proceed with the 2026 Arts Regret Process as it's laid out in your staff report. 26 budget is $159,135. And we intend to use the same process that we have the past few years. We've received pretty supportive feedback from applicants over those past couple of years. So we expect to just continue down our, our same path. Program schedule is detailed in your staff report. So you'll see that after our review committee reviews and ranks the applications in November, we'll be back before you in December with some funding recommendations. So happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Conlin. Questions for Mr. Conlin? Motions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Berg, second by Lunskey. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post-name sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, six to one, Osowski dissents. Item number 3.2 2026 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair Weigel. We're here before you to review the 2026 CDBG funding recommendations. We received seven applications, two withdrew before we did our interviews, but we had five really good projects. CAC moved all of them forward for consideration for the review and then we did the vote. We had one that rose to the top, was a high ranking by just about a half a point. It is Spectra Health. We've reviewed that in terms of the project itself. It's a patient intake and security rehab. The improvements that they're doing are on the first floor of the facility. It's to create a centralized patient check-in and waiting area for the purpose of improving building access, control, security and patient experience. Hopefully, everybody knows where it's at, it's right downtown. It's in the former Deaconess Building. It's in the former Deaconess Building. They've really transformed the building and this improvement will really go a long ways, I think, to, to patient experience there as well. So with that, we did recommend the, the awarding them number one and the funding for CDBG. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I move approval with a comment.
Sounds good. We have a motion.
Second.
Second by Berg, motion by Osowski, comment?
Yeah, I think it, I'm really excited to just kind of give it to one organization. I think it really allows them to get done those larger projects that sometimes they're not able to do. But I just want to, I would like us to, I don't know, maybe keep a list or a mental note that they are getting the full funding this year. So next year, I would hope maybe that they, we kind of spread the wealth a little bit and maybe they won't get a portion. I don't think it's right that some of these organizations get it every year and others are kind of left out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Further comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Osowski, second by Berg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Item 3.2 is PSAP Transition Plan with items A, B, C, and D also attached. Chief.
Vice President Weigel, members of committee. Back in April of this year, it was voted and approved to... Nope. Voted and approved to reorganize, reorganize the PSAP Division underneath the Fire Department's leadership. At that time, as Deputy Chief, I was reassigned to PSAP to oversee the day-to-day operations and advanced technology. I'm happy to report that we've seen steady progress in, in both staffing and these large improvements in technology as we're moving forward. We've certainly had some setbacks, but we address those as they come up and continue to move in a professional and positive manner. The next step in this, now that I have moved up to Fire Chief, is to create the position of Fire Department Division Chief of PSAP Operations and get that into the city's organizational pan, organizational plan and pay plan so we can then advertise and fill that position. That position would kind of take on the role that I was doing there and overseeing the day-to-day operations of the PSAP Division and then report directly to the Fire Chief. We'll be asking that it goes in at a salary rate of 24 and it'll be funded as in the approved 25 and 26 operational budgets. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for Chief Markham?
Move approval.
We have a motion. Oh, President Sandy, question quick?
What pay, I'm sorry, the, if this position is being at a pay rate of 24, what was Ms. LaHayes at previously?
That's the same as Ms. LaHayes was. It's 117, 104, which is in line with the Deputy Chief's position with the Fire Department.
Great, thank you, Chief. I'll certainly move it or second it.
Your second.
Sounds good. We have a motion by, motion by Osowski, second by Sandy. Further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Item 3.3, Federal Funding Request for Project 8904, which is the Regional Roads Program, Urban Roads Program, Transportation Alternatives Program and the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Mr. Kranko.
Good evening, Vice President Weigel and members of the committee. Before you are the federal funding programs that we end applying for every year. We were, ended up seeing this at the previous committee, the whole. Biggest thing I can end up saying on, as for changes was, in case you are not aware, on the Regional Roads Program in particular, just ended up updating a table in there earlier today from some comments I got from the NDOT local district. Otherwise, we can either go through those list of projects.
My second.
Motion to approve by Sandy, second by Osowski. Further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kranko. Item 3.4, Plans and Specs for Project 8707, District 776, paving streetlights for Corinta Lem Six Re subdivision. Mr. Lieberman.
Good evening, Vice President Weigel, members of the committee. This is the third and hopefully final phase of building out the infrastructure for our Corinta Lem development. This past year, we've been constructing the wet utilities and the pond, stormwater pond and pump station. This is looking forward to the paving of two classified roadways and a local road in this development.
I move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Osowski, second by Berg. Further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. I'm assuming you have 3.5 as well, which is a change order for number, number one for Project 8878, 2025 city sidewalks.
Thank you, Vice President Weigel. You're correct. This change order is being brought before city council because it exceeds the city engineer's authority. We've had a very busy, very productive year and gave our contractor a lot of work. Some of this is special assessed to residents, some of it is paid for with city funds. We're requesting that, that city council approve this change order and reset the city engineer's authority for this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. We have a motion approved by Veen, second by Friedols. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item 3.6, Approved Sole Source Purchase of Marsh Master and Associated Budget Amendments.
Good evening. We did have a chance to look at a piece of equipment that wasn't included in your 2026 budget. And the reason it wasn't is we were looking at, trying to get to be able to actually try the equipment. It's a different piece. It's called a marsh master. It was actually invented to be a duck boat that ended up being a very useful tool. The Grand Forks Air Force Base owns one. And so when we were talking about our challenges to maintain ditches, especially the English Cooley diversion, as well as property kind of in and around our lagoons on at the wastewater treatment plant, they brought us onto the airbase and showed us how well this equipment worked and it can actually drive in and through water because its ability to be able to float and then till up like cattails and then cut grass that's kind of on the slopes of those water bodies in those instances. And so the staff asked that we consider it further approving to purchase for next year. The reason being is that on an average, we can spend around $170 doing ditch cleaning a year for our flood protection and, and our maintenance systems within our storm, storm sewer conveyance systems. And so the piece of equipment itself is around 200,000 or $270,000. But we had proposed to fund it from flood protection, wastewater treatment plant, our water maintenance division, as well as through our English Cooley maintenance budget. And so although not included in the budget, I told the staff that I would bring it forward and we would think about considering it because we do feel that over time it would have considerable savings for us within those divisions.
Thank you, Ms. Parvy. Comments, Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, I just have comments. One, I think it's a great buy. I am concerned that it wasn't in the budget though. How many, you said every year you spend about $100,000 on, on ditch cleaning?
Yeah.
And where does that money normally come from?
From our operations budget.
From...
So from the English Cooley diversion cleaning would come from our stormwater operations budget.
Okay, and so, I mean, who, who's allowed to operate something like that though? Like is, do you need a special operator?
No, we would actually do training once they delivered the equipment and there would be a number of operators that would learn how to be able to utilize that equipment, both at the wastewater treatment plant and within our stormwater wastewater conveyance systems.
Okay.
Stormwater and flood protection conveyance.
And you're going to pull a lot of, some of your funds and then flood protection? What are the other funds that you're going to pull out of to fund this?
Wastewater treatment, because we do have a number of areas on there that we could do some land management in order to help with our mitigation activities, water maintenance, as well as through the English Cooley maintenance.
And then flood protection, we're going to use the flood protection money also?
Yeah, it was about 100,000, 107,000 is what we had suggested.
From the flood protection? Okay, can, maybe just for next week, can I just get a breakdown of each? Is it in the staff report?
Sorry, it's under the findings and...
Oh, there it is.
But yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. I move approval.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Osowski, second by Lunskey, and a comment?
So currently you have $100,000 in your budget. Will that decrease? Will you save anything with having this?
Yes, absolutely. So currently we do different sections of it and so we hope to over time be able to reduce that. We do still have to do some cleaning to make sure that whatever debris, like sand and stuff in the Cooley diversion is actually removed. But this will allow us to have a better idea of what's actually there before we get down in there and try to clean out those spaces, but, and keep it a little bit more clean, clean cut in those spaces that we normally wouldn't have been mowing or be able to access because of the wetness of the ground.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lunskey. Further comments? Mr. Veen?
It seemed really interesting. Mr. Friedols just showed me a, a video of what it actually looked like in operation and that was pretty sweet.
It is pretty neat. And we actually had operators operating out at the Lem, on at the Grand Forks Air Force Base too. I could show those to you too. But there is a pretty good website that kind of details everything they're able to do with that. A lot of government agencies utilize that piece of equipment just because it is able to get in and around the water so easily, kind of starts to float when it needs to and can help us with the English Cooley diversion when we get beaver dams on there and we can't necessarily get access to them either. We've had like underground, underground contractors help us do that because they've got the larger permit that they can utilize to reach into the Cooley, but something like this, we'll be able to get in and, and do more of that maintenance by ourselves.
Thank you. As long, I think as long as we keep it away from the mayor, we should be fine. So seeing no further comments, we do have a motion at a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Parvy. Item 3.7, Approve Sole Source Purchase of Ultra Filtration Membranes and Associated Budget Amendments. Mr. Getz?
Yes, sir. We are at the five-year mark for ultra filtration at the new regional water treatment plant and we're looking to replace two trains and fully populate those trains. We have a lead time of 30 to 40 weeks. We do have the money budgeted in the 26 budget, but we're looking to try and purchase this year, get the purchase order rolling for this year.
Move approval.
Thank you.
My second.
We have a motion approved by Sandy, second by Osowski. Quick comment?
Yeah, why, why is there a bunch of stuff redacted out of here?
It is a sole source and it is proprietary to Viola.
So we're not allowed to see the breakdown in price?
I have to defer to legal. They told us that it was redacted because of it's a sole, sole source and it's proprietary to their business.
Who?
Viola.
Who redacted it?
Viola.
So did you get to see the numbers?
I, I have seen the numbers.
So you've got to see them? Are, can we not see the numbers, Mr. Gostad?
If it's, if there is an exception, the issue here is that this becomes an open record and the issue is going to be that they're asserting it's proprietary information. There's an exception under the open record laws for proprietary information for disclosure and open record. I haven't, I haven't seen the information either. I'm, I'm relying upon the veracity of the party that has asserted proprietary information and the redaction of it.
I mean, are Fred's emails not open to open records requests, I guess? I mean, if he got it in his email, wouldn't that, how, how were you able to view it?
Via email, PDF.
Is that not considered open records?
It would be, but the same exception for proprietary information. In fact, that's what we go through when, when an open record does come in. We look to see if there is some privilege or information that would not otherwise be available in an open record request.
Okay. One other question, are they the only company that we can purchase the membranes from?
This company, yes, because it is a Viola product. The, the cassettes are, were made by Viola. And that's what would fit into the units.
Are all of the ones that we have at our water treatment plant, Viola?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. I believe we had a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion in the second.
We have a motion and a second. Further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Councilmember, discussion matters, Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, I just want to say that I had a really nice time at the Franklin on Fourth event last Thursday. It's a very nice building and it was a nice event and I'm really excited about the officer grants that we received. So that's good news for us. So thank you.
Ms. Berg?
Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day.
You? Ms. Lunskey? Nothing? Mr. Friedols?
Nope.
Mr. Veen? President Sandy?
Thank you, Mr. Weigel.
All right, I have nothing.
I move adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn by Osowski, second by Berg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we are adjourned.